Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order if that's okay, it's exciting. But I have agenda, so let's try and start from the beginning. Thank you very much for attending. I'd like to also just make one point. The Dover School Committee has been under the scrutiny of the press in the last week, which people are unaware of. I was interviewed by the Chicering Reporters about the air conditioning project, and it was wonderful to use this room for that purpose as well as the purpose we're using it today. So with that for the due, call to order and invite any community comments. Now being done, I'd like to start the first item with our PTO report by Lockman and Jim Ho.
Thank you. I did have my 97-point plan for PTO improvement, but Adrian asked me to cut it down a little. Our theme this year is heart. We heart Chicering, and it's helpful, empathetic, appreciative, respectful teamwork. And we had a very successful kickoff with the directory. I think you've seen the cover that came out, and that was great. We did have the back-to-school pick-up with grade attendance, roughly 275 to 300 for the back-to-school pick-up. I'd like to thank the vendors, Coach Pete and our DJ, and actually Jen Martin, who does have children here at Chicering and owns Martin's Seafood, who does supply the cod squad. So that's always great. Dover Day's fair was great. We did have a 20% over-income projection. We did have an initial capital day that was higher this year because we changed some of the games. We bought the actual dump tank where I've been renting it. And it was a much more pleasant experience. I actually did the first shift, and it wasn't as bad as you expect. So please feel free to join in, then volunteer, not PTO. We expect to see you there next year.
I prefer being duct taped to a wall.
Yeah. Sold. I'm sure we can arrange a fundraiser and all that. Open board meeting, we just had that. And Adrian and Rachel, thank you for coming. That was fantastic. And Meg Fields from the CPAC Committee also attended. And I think that sparked some good discussion, both within the executive board, and there were a few attendees, a couple of attendees from the parent population. And then I think it was really good to talk about both the special education and some of the approaches that we were taking with school security and that type of stuff. So I'm sure that you and Ben and Laura will be getting much feedback in that regard. Our next event coming up is movie night. This past year, we had purchased a license that gives us the permission to show unlimited movies. So we're, instead of doing a games night, which we took there and run every two years, we'll do an extra movie night. So next Friday, we are showing Monsters Inc. in the cafeteria. So please feel free, and make sure we have plenty of candy, and you're ready to go. The other upcoming event is Parents Night Out, which is October 9th at the Dover Legion. So it has not changed in 35 years since I was there. So it's even more than welcome to take a trip down memory lane at the Dover Legion. It's a good night to meet and greet with some of the parents. So that's been very successful. We are doing our continuing community events, the Science Fair, the Bike Safety International Night. Those are all upcoming, they're on the calendar. And our big event this year is the auction, March 24th. The theme is Mardi Gras. You may have seen the notice on the board downstairs, and it's on the key tags. Please join us, there'll be lots of great items to bid on. And then the CE. The CE is of course our biggest proportion, I guess, in spending every year. And that's been great so far this year. We have changed up a few things, and I know Museum of Science was onsite today for the second graders. They had their states of matter. And they loved it. Liquid nitrogen, it's always a good show. And that's really about it for the PTO. We are continuing our ongoing endeavors, and so seems you're running very well.
And Jim, for the auction?
Yes.
For those community members who would like to submit items for donation, will there be...
There started the, so the executive, the full team is in place now, and they are starting to reach out now to solicit donations and gifts. So that, and they will definitely get our communication out. But there is also either auctions or fundraising.
Fantastic. Excellent. And that date again at the Legion?
That's 11, I believe it's 7:00. But don't worry, we'll send out a need light.
Brilliant. Any questions, Jim? It's great. And again, I just must say, when both of us attended that meeting, it was great to have a chance to just introduce the school committee, what we do, what we don't do, and also just to offer anything we can do as the other side of that coin, supporting the kids, school and community.
No, it was great, and I think it helped even our newer members see some of exactly what the school committee can kind of do. And it was great, I think that was...
Actually, one thought is, if you actually be here, how the movie night doors in the cafeteria? When we did our tour last month, we sort of talked about the idea of doing movies in there versus being in the gymnasium, so it's a smaller confined space and feel a little bit more comfortable. Because people usually kind of go to their corners and look at the separate side in the gym, and then it would be like a little bit space. So it'd be nice having it in the cafeteria, and it should be obviously an enhanced visual-audio, audiovisual experience.
Exactly, and I think that, I used the projector the other day, and it was fantastic. Easy to use and everything else. And the other piece of that is Metco. The Metco students were talking about doing some of that, showing some movies in the afternoons. Because with the fewer half-days and also with their PD and stuff, so it'll be, it'll be interesting.
Therefore, it has to be used.
Yeah, hopefully it'll leverage it a little bit, so that'll be good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Excellent. So the next item was going to be the reports, but I'm going to bring forward, if possible, the capital reports. We have an external speaker, so you don't have to stay tuned, but that's very kind. So I'll perhaps ask Dawn to introduce and frame this item.
Exactly. So as we've been reporting, the me re-engaged onsite insight to update our previous 20-year capital plan and bring us forward for the next 20 years. And so this summer in July, Steve joined us and actually updated all three of the school district plans. And we've been meeting individually with each building, subcommittees. We met with Brooke and Mike, Michael Jaffe, and Ralph Carey and myself a couple of weeks ago, provided some feedback to Steve, and he is included in the version that you're looking at tonight. So I'll turn it over to Steve. What I asked him to do was sort of just give you, because I don't think anyone was around when we did it the first time, just a little quick overview as to what goes into this, what goes into the update, and then go over basically what, at a high level, our 20-year plan looks like right now. And then answer any questions that the committee has. So I'll turn it over to Steve. Welcome.
So basically, I don't know if everybody's going to just want to spin around to show it, so let's prepare. But Capital Needs Plan and Capital Needs Assessment is basically, very simply, just a 20-year plan of what's here, how old is it, when does it need to be replaced, and an estimated cost of what the replacement will be in that year. In that year, meaning that basically we take the cost, the replacement cost that it would cost this year, and then wherever it lands in the 20-year plan, we inflate it 3% per year. So it's an estimated cost, accounting for the fact that probably over the 20-year plan, things will increase about 3% per year. So the total cost that you see includes factoring in the inflation. So...I'm going to start right here. So it's simply just that. And we do a 20-year plan so that you can look pretty far out into what needs the school will have, what capital needs the school will have over the next 20 years. Why do we update it every five years? We typically, that's our suggestion, is every five years. Because things change. And probably one of the biggest examples is your air conditioning system, which wasn't on the books five years ago, but it's now in this report. So things change in terms of mechanicals. Also, things fail prematurely. We may have a boiler that you put in five years ago that should last 20 years, but it just failed prematurely. So that changes the plan. You could have acts of God, acts of nature, change the plan. So the 20-year timeframe is just so you can sort of look out and get a pretty good idea of what's going to happen over the next 20 years. However, things are going to change, so you really want to update it every five years. And that's, the first thing we did with each of these plans was sit down, Dawn, Up and I sat down and went line by line by line by line through the first plan, and said, "Okay, did we do this? No, we haven't done this yet, let's keep this, or let's move this up, or actually, we're going to wait a little bit, let's move this out a little bit further." So that was the first thing, was just going through and sort of getting all that nailed down, and adding new stuff like this new system. Luckily, they were onsite, the guys installing the system were onsite when I was here, so they were able to talk to them and get a little bit of, you know, idea of what was going in the system, what was going to be installed. So what you didn't have before, what you have now is new compressors outside, plus you have new variable friction flow end units inside the building. That all has to go into plan. New fencing around the compressors, that's now in the plan. So you see that it changes. Things change at every property. So that's why you really want to update them every five years. And then it was basically going through and taking pictures just for the report, and just seeing, you know, if things had changed since the last time we were here, and then getting an idea of new things that they were going to do, such as the flooring out here. They want to change that to a different type of floor. So, you know, getting all that in the plan. So things that have changed between the five years since we were here last, new ideas of things they want to change, you know, maybe, just like the flooring, that even though the floor probably lasts a little longer, they said, "You know, we decided we want to change the flooring to this, or we want to change the floor to that." Or the next time we come out five years, they could say, "You know what? We decided to go a different direction."
So to that point out, just add, so you know we would put the vinyl planking in the cafeteria. So all the flooring that we have in here now, we've changed over to be that type of flooring in the report.
And Dawn, can you just, when you talked about this report in the past, you've also said how useful the town finance, the Warren Committee, and the Calvary and the Selectment use this, because they actually get to see the planned, they'll be able to town expenses as well.
Right, especially with this being a new building, that the town of Dover actually was instrumental in making this happen in all three districts, because they wanted to make sure they preserved this building and didn't let it go how Carroll School sort of went. And so they pulled this together so that gives them a 20-year forecast, and it was able to put it down on paper versus people just saying, "Well, we think, we think, we think." So this has been a great tool. And if you just want to talk to a little bit about the blue that we added.
Yep. And, oh, just before I go to that, the other thing too is, not only is the timing of when everything should be done, there's also quantities. So when you want to do something in terms of flooring, whatever, it's like, "Well, how much do we have? Go to the Capitol Need Assembly. We've got, you know, this many square feet of floor, we've got this many linear feet of fencing outside." So that's the other useful item, it's just a quick, you know, go-to in terms of measurements of what you have. So the way to read the report basically is, I usually start at the back, because this is all the guts, this is where all the information is. And then you move forward. This is just the itemized, line-by-line list of everything that's at the property. And what we did different from the previous report is, everything in white is everything that is covered by the capital budgets, okay? So this is the item, this is how much of it is, the quantity. This is the cost per square foot. This is the total. So this is just this column times this column, that's the total. How old is it, which I think is two, right? Typically, 20-year life on asphalt, subtract the two, so that's basically all it is. It's just doing the math, so you replace it in year 18. So if you look at the cost out in year 18, you'll see it's much higher than the cost in this column, again, because we inflated 3% per year. So that's simply all it is, and this is just a note.
So in your math, like I get the 2, 20, 18, but you help me out with the 16, 50, 5 fifteenths, which is like the second one down, or when you get to the first blue one, it's a... I just understand with the percentage, like I don't know if it's fractions or what you have.
The...
So if you go to the second one down, it goes, it's 16 years in of a 50-year lifecycle, but then it has 5 fifteenths across, right?
On the replacement schedule, 5 slash 5.
20-year, 5 fifteenths? Okay, this is just, it's the year of action. So this tells you, this is basically, this is, we're doing it in year 18.
Right.
And this one, we're doing it in year 5 and year 15. So if you look over here, here's year 5, and here's year 15. So this is just telling you what year we're doing it in, right? And this column right here tells you over how many years. This is not saying do it in the first year. This is saying do it all in one year. Because in other instances, we'll spread it out. You're not going to do everything in one year. You may spread out, like if you're doing a whole bunch of flooring. When you get to the interior section, you may spread the flooring out over a number of years. So what it does, it takes that total cost, if we're doing it over five years, it'll divide it by five. It'll give you five, one-fifth every five years. So that's all it is, is what year are you doing it in, and are you doing it all in one year, or are you spreading it out over a number of years? And that's all it is. So then we get down to the blue. What's the blue? The blue is basically, we went through and Ralph Don said, "This is everything that we want to keep in the plan." So we know quantities, we know costs, so moving, you know, looking ahead, we know this is probably what it's going to cost us. This is probably when we want to do it. But we don't want to include it in the total cost of our capital budget, because it's done on a different budget. So I simply just manually, on the right side, I just zero it out. Because these numbers here are what roll into the capital needs summary, which is actually what you're looking at right there. So by zeroing these out, these costs don't, do not roll up into the total costs shown in the capital needs summary. However, Donna Rell said, "You know what? It still would be really helpful to be able to have those costs in there of what it would cost us under different budgets." So that's what the blue is. It is pretty much anything under $10,000, right?
Anything that we, wouldn't we consider to be capital? Or anything that we thought there'd be other funding sources other than asking the town for capital funding?
And Dawn, am I right in saying that one of the additions in this report, the 2012, is that large parts of the kitchen equipment are included in this one?
Yes, it's a word...
But, as we discussed in our last conversation, most of it was under $10,000.
Okay.
So it's all listed there, but the majority does not roll up into the total cost.
Thank you. And is that just a question, is that as a capital budget, it's town policy, so it's a capital rather than operating?
If you want to turn it right now, you can see that the majority was under $10,000, but we have it all listed there. And two things that were greater than $10,000 were the tilting skillet that I zeroed out as well, and this stand mixer, which I zeroed out because of the fact that she said probably will not be replacing them.
Right, it was actually really helpful to take this and walk, go a walk-through of the kitchen with Jamal, because I learned more about what's in there. But the mixer came from the old Carroll School, and is rarely used. So we, whenever they use it, we're not going to replace it. And the tilting skillet was something that was purchased but never really embraced by the kitchen here, because it just wasn't needed. So we talked about potentially moving that to the region where it would be better utilized. So it's opened up a whole realm of discussions that I think will declutter some of our kitchen areas and put equipment in the place where it's going to be utilized.
So what's the next step? How would this be used by you and the capital subcommittee?
This report?
Yeah.
So this is our guide. So we use this as a plan to first do a draft, so what's in year three? And we'll go through and we'll talk about everything, because it doesn't mean because it's in year three, we're going to do it in year three. But it allows you to have a checklist of things to talk about. And I think that's what Steve will confirm too. This is more of a guide, based on industry, you know, useful life, and what we sort of see here. So it is more of a guide, more than anything, but it allows us also to do a really good five-year forecast, which is what the town's been requesting now, so that they can do a more long-term capital planning for the whole town.
So for example, the roof covering shows four, one year's worth of price, so they would want to know that.
Exactly. So that's going to pop up on their radar, right?
And that's the key, key thing is really like what's coming up? What big ticket items we have coming up? So this is pretty much this description of what all this is back here, just line by line by line. You've got the mechanical equipment, these equipments, then you get into the building exterior, the roof, and then all the interior. The interior is basically mostly just flooring, and then, you know, furnishing, things like that. So from here, move back forward, all these numbers roll up into the capital needs summary. So this is all of the, every page of year one cost, every page of year two cost, summarized under site systems, building mechanical, architectural, and then the interiors. So this is where Dawn was saying, this is where it's very helpful. And this is just a very, just a visual of each of these columns, all right? It's very simple. So the blue is the building exterior, this is all the building architectural. Okay? This is interiors, building mechanical. So just a quick glance, you can say, "We've got some big costs coming up in year four. We've got some really big costs out in year 19." So this is the quick, you know, full-scope view of, you know, what do we have? What do we need to prepare for? And then basically, you just say, "Okay, all of this, you know, what is it?" Then you can quickly go over here, and you can see basically which section you've got the biggest costs are, and then go to that section and say, "Oh, it's this, 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 and this we've got coming up."
That's excellent, and it's very, I think that challenge is very useful. Is there any questions?
Do we have this in Excel format?
Yes, it will happen.
And it will all feed so that this, we can use it dynamically? And just as the schedule changes each year, because things may get pushed out or pulled in, those values can be...
When I was on your guide's side, I actually got that, because I had to go in there and take all the maintenance out, because it was really hard for us to get just the capital. So we were able to go and take off copy and just sort of cut it out by taking out all the maintenance and then just seeing the capital, so we can do that.
And then for the capital items that occur in the intervening years, we'll get from the vendors their estimated replacements?
The year in which we're going to project it, Ralph goes and gets updated estimates on any item that we're going to bring forward, to be requested.
And then for new items? So for example, if we were to have put in the flooring next year, and perhaps that wasn't contemplated, is that something that we're able to...
Probably what you would do is, if you look at five-year increments, if you knew you did one of those things, you would probably change it there. I don't know if you'd necessarily start making this a real-time document. That's why they come back in every five years and sort of look at it for us. So I don't think we would do that for the whole... If we changed flooring in two years, I'm not sure we would take this report and extrapolate it out necessarily. We would just keep it. We would know we were doing it, but we'd only look at what it would impact us for the five years.
Sure, and I guess, I guess almost any capital item wouldn't have any substantial cost within...
If you just switch them up.
...a five-year period either.
Yeah.
And that should be pushed out, that should be pushed out to another cycle anyway.
Right.
If it's a new capital.
Exactly, right, you're not going to replace it, yeah.
This is huge enough. Thank you for taking the time to come, I really appreciate it. I see those windows out in year 19.
So, and this is just, you know, photographs and this description of things, you know, not really anything crucial there. And then the narrative is really just a word-by-word description of everything this went through.
So we'll finalize it, and everyone will get sort of a bound pretty copy that you can keep in your notebook and at night read, and there will be quizzes.
And basically what we do when we, I'll give you an idea of... Except we have to put in a bunch of, but... So basically, when you do say your bound covers, it'll look like this, where that page will be face up, and then when you flip it over, you've got the whole 20-years across. And then you've got that, so every item, you see the whole line. So you just flip, and it just makes a lot of history.
Thank you very much. Perfect. All right? Appreciate that, thanks a lot. So going back to the running order, I'd like to hand over to Chris Williams.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. So happy to be able to work with the PTO and the couple, couple work that you do best. Appreciate that. In terms of the school, educators are largely focused on science and math right now, with those two new curricular areas. Their goals are largely focused on that, spending a lot of time on that during common planning times as well. We're also using common planning times in the next two weeks to talk about some gender issues, which is led by our guidance counselor. And we are, we are in full swing. It always amazed me how quickly in the school year, we're just in full swing, and really enjoying the kids and the expansion of our school, and the number of students that we have this year, our programming, class in particular. So we're in a good place. Do you have any questions for us?
Come on, Brooke.
I had a question about the discussions about world language tariff. Do you know, and is that a point, do you, how broad are those conversations kept being?
Actually, Beth has had the conversations with the world language department at the high school post planning. Have you had those yet?
Sure, we had the K through 12, or the pre-K through 12 world language team come together to talk about class and getting prepared for grade five and then grade six. And there seems to be an interest to cross all four schools for having someone who can kind of supervise the transition, especially since at the middle and high school, we're also looking to transition into a proficiency-based model of language. So as opposed to having a Spanish book that you open up, you do chapter one, chapter two, chapter three, chapter four, it's more about finding a child's proficiency level in speaking, listening, reading and writing, and then giving them where they're at, moving them for proof medical units. So there's a lot of work to be done. And I think they're looking at the arts model that we have now with the K through 12 director, and training that we can have the same for the class program.
I wonder, are you thinking more of all... Oh, go ahead. I mean, just in my house, I have a fourth grader who has been taking Spanish since kindergarten, a fifth grader who missed the whole thing, and I have an eighth grader taking Spanish. So we're like, it's chaos. The fourth grader can sometimes help the eighth grader, but they're all... So I wonder, I mean, I see that as a challenge, to sort of synchronize all that curriculum, because just in my own house, like, they're going to be in very different places with language.
Right, and the sixth grade team, I think, is prepared, both Spanish and French and Latin, to look at the skills that the kids are bringing with them, because even just looking at it from a fundamental basis, even though they've all been studying Spanish, the wires in their brain are going to be a little bit more advanced in terms of learning any language. So I know that this year, the sixth grade team specifically, and we've even invited the high school crew to come down and continue to do observations at both elementary schools, so they can see what's actually happening, and start to do that forward-thinking. And then we're also chugging about doing some dip-sticking assessments and looking at the proficiency levels, both for the fourth grade this year and the fifth grade next year. So the sixth grade team really has a better sense of where they're going to be at for Spanish or any language. And two, along with that, there's going to be a need for some curriculum planning. You know, I think that the sixth grade curriculum's going to have to change significantly. So we're looking about spending some of our professional development time and money in the summer, providing that opportunity for the sixth grade teachers. We're also looking at an opportunity to... We're also looking at an opportunity to kind of be leaders in language because we're moving towards a proficiency model and because we're going to be able to work at an advanced level with the sixth graders once they get there. We're looking at perhaps taking some of the essential questions that any, you know, you have essential questions in any content area, but actually making them around issues of cultural responsiveness and diversity and saying, let's get that human difference piece through the Spanish program at the middle school and then ask science and social studies and English and math to kind of jump on board and find places to interact with that versus the opposite, which is what's happening at the elementary school where the Spanish teachers are finding connections to the content levels, we're saying, let's flip it on the cut. So there's a lot of great discussion, and then it's a lot of work that needs to be done with the curriculum and people who really understand how foreign language is and should be taught. So again, training big, we'd love to have somebody with some relief time to be able to oversee that transition and work to K through 12 team.
And we're talking about FY '20? If these kids will show up?
Well, the first year they'll be, yeah.
Yeah, they're two years out, right? We've been talking about this, it's getting closer and closer every year we bring it up, it's almost at our doorstep.
And the model, so can you just clarify for folks who don't understand the proficiency model versus the more traditional model of instruction?
So it's more, if you think about the way reading and writing is taught now, it's more full language-based approach to teaching language versus vocabulary and grammar, it's more conversational.
Conversational.
Conversational, getting them to really be able to listen and speak in the language, and then the reading and writing will come along with that, but being able to throw them into another country and be able to converse with people in that culture. And so it's really looking at that versus the net symbols, phonics, and vocabulary, and this is how you construct a sentence.
That's great. Any other questions? I have a couple, that's all right. The, it was fascinating to read all of the areas of professional development in the group, something we talked all about, how the professional government is really valued, I think. The mindfulness one was interesting. A friend of mine is principal of an elementary school in London, and they just did a mindfulness day, and instead of calling it mindfulness, which is, sounds very adult, grown-up word, for the kids, they called it Doing One Thing at a Time Day. Because it was just trying to step back and explain to an eight-year-old what it actually is, it's not doing all these things, it's a one thing at a time day. I just wanted to mention that.
How nice to dedicate a day to that. Hard luck on those days.
And the, Laura, the point you made on the QPOs, now that there are some matching with QPOs at other schools, is that in the region, is it very common? Is it just starting? Is it just Pine Hill or is it...
I believe every year we've had one or two people do that for people who do not have colleagues within the building and who want to focus on their unique practice. It does help to reach out to another school. There's a bit of a challenge in terms of finding a common time to meet, but they've made it work and found it very valuable. So during the matching process, when the QPOs at all buildings, is that window when they're looking at the applications? It's addressed during that period, and today I think it's worked out quite well.
And the last point was just noting, and again, slightly talking to Dawn as well, noting the variety of issues and the community issues at the school. Please keep us in touch with that. It's table, yeah. And please keep us in touch, let us know what kind of relief improvements butt-kicking is happening.
I have those in my house, too.
Is that distinct here? Was that different from Oklahoma to region?
The phone lines here have always been fennicky, and I think that's from the originally, I mean, from the beginning.
But the connectivity was different from the recent regional, or was it just...
Oh, yeah, that's different, yeah.
Okay. I just want to ask a question maybe in case we have any questions or maybe I miss it, but thinking about community comments from the last time we were here with the kindergarten educational assistance, if I read this correctly, we had two, we were thinking that there were concerns about adding, getting back to level services of four. Those two that we had have since moved to different positions outside of the district, so now we're looking for four, or am I reading this wrong?
You're very close. One of the kindergarten aides, yes, has taken a position in another district. We also had a special ed EA.
Oh, okay.
Who took a position in another district. So we have, we're hiring for three positions in kindergarten.
Yep.
So that we will then have four in all four sections, and we are also hiring a special education EA.
And since you wrote this, is there any progress in...
Yes.
Because I know it's pretty fluid.
Yes. I submitted something, I believe it was this morning, for a kindergarten EA, and we have two more that are very close.
Great, okay.
And we had, we did have some that just fell through.
Yeah, you know, that happens.
Exactly.
As long as we're on it because it's important to...
It's been a very high priority.
Certainly consider it right now, so that's good.
And thank you very much for your support.
How quickly can they start once they're...
I have to say, people at central office have been fabulous in terms of just having a very quick turnaround for that. Everyone's made it a priority, and I very much appreciate that.
Thank you. We get the work we send them right over to the business office and have them keep their paperwork.
Getting it right now.
Any more questions to the principal? Thank you. What's more going?
Thank you. So I have now had the opportunity to spend two mornings here with Ms. Stile and Ms. Ryan doing classroom walk-throughs and getting to see our students and teachers in action. They had a really great experience. There's just so much joy and love and caring and learning happening in this building. It is really just magical to see. I heard that all summer through September, and I'm actually getting to witness it. So it's really amazing, and it's, you know, why we get up every day and go there. So thank you. I did talk about the curriculum review process. These ladies lived through last year in terms of the science review, so Ms. Ryan is going to be going in-depth into the science process and where we are in her presentation in a little while, so I won't go too deep into that. But we had the elementary, middle, and high schools continuing to work on the science plan that they created last spring, and things are rolling along there. English, the sixth through 12 team has begun their curriculum mapping process and revising their curriculum maps, and we talked about what a DS graduate should look like in terms of their English skills. So we're kind of preparing the groundwork for the next five years in English as to what conversations we should be having, making sure that our kids are proficient in 21st century skills and global learning and all of those things. And the elementary teachers are ready and willing to work on the English curriculum too, but just realizing that the focus right now is on science and math. We're going to begin that work this year, but really, you know, in the future have some more time to dive into English more specifically so that we can do things well, and so that doing everything is kind of okay. The class program, you heard a little bit about that a few minutes ago, and Ms. Stile will go more into depth in terms of what that's looking like now and into the future. The Metco program, we had a great evening with the leadership and our Metco families in Boston, and we got to know each other a little bit, talk about what's going well and how we can improve our homeschool connection in terms of making everybody feel as though they're part of the community and how they can say what we do here in DS. The MCAS results came out yesterday, so some of us at this table know how we did, some of us don't. Everybody will know tomorrow. But, you know, considering that the new next generation MCAS are based on more rigorous standards and more difficult questions that require higher ordered thinking, you will notice today's public information that there was a dip in the state's scores, but I think that as a community, we should still be really proud of the work that our teachers and students did, and you'll get to see that tomorrow. Just two other things that weren't in my report that I quickly want to mention is to publicly acknowledge the technology department. We had a virus run through the system last week, and they stopped everything, dropped everything, and were able to catch it in no time and get everything back up and running. And even though there was a few teachers, beginning with the alphabet, the A's, C's, that we thought lost all their files, we had backups and backups and backups. So today it's fully back to where it was. So kudos to the technology department for being able to address that quickly.
Is there anything that would be needed to thwart that going forward, you know, upgrading security or virus protection, you know?
Anthony is going to be having a conversation with a firewall company about what happened and why, and I think he'll get back to us in terms of what's needed, and, you know, that's going to be part of budget season anyways in terms of talking about it. So to be continued. He's still trying to get to the bottom of who and why from the timeline. And lastly, I know there's concern around, or not concern, but questions and support around the professional development committee coming together, and I wanted to let you know that the first committee meeting is October 26th, and there'll be at least one administrator and two teachers from each of the buildings coming together on October 26th to launch a discussion about how to improve professional development in the district and meet the needs of the teachers and their work, but also meet the goals of the schools and the district moving forward with a limited amount of time.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much, thank you. Christine?
Great, thank you. As you see in your packet, I've written a report for special education. I highlighted the circuit breaker funding and reimbursement money because for the first time, we were able to see some dollars back in the district for our in-district students because of the way we've been writing IEPs, which I think is good to see anyway. And we also did, as you remember, claim and filed and received money for extraordinary relief, which was an additional payment back in the spring. So anyway, this money that's indicated here is the total claims for the June filing. The strategic learning center here at Chickering has had a slight expansion, trying to address the needs of our younger students. So we have, we were able to move some money around and create a point four position for our youngest kids that are being identified as SLD. And I continue the conversation with Ann Larson, is our consultant at the region, and we've been having lots of conversations about early identification and strategic planning for those kids and thinking about how that continuum of support exists in our schools and whether or not we're doing enough and meeting the kids in the inclusion setting enough and what impact that has on our instruction in the gen ed classes. So all that conversation is happening very fruitfully and in the moment. I also included for you a chart of our areas of eligibility. The chart indicates the numbers of students in each building that are eligible for special education in that particular area of disability. I think it's helpful for us to look at data through different lenses, and so this was a lens that I thought was helpful, and I have shared this information with, this and a couple of other charts with our entire special ed staff so that they also, because it's hard as a special educator to look broadly when you're thinking about your caseload. And so I thought it was helpful to show some information of comparisons and what the big picture looks like. I skipped over the paragraph, but want to go back to the preschool here at Chickering. You know, we are running the full day in one classroom and half-day in the other classroom. And I think if Laura and Deb and I had our druthers, we would be saying two full days. It's hard to run a half-day classroom. I think our additional teacher is fantastic, and she puts in a lot of extra hours that probably, she's not getting great for, but she's doing a fantastic job. And we'll see what our numbers look like. We have, our lottery applications, I think, are open. If not, they will be very, very soon, November 1st, I think. And Mary Clary, who is our new team chair here at Chickering, has been working, doing a lot of coordination between the two buildings and getting great conversations started that haven't really happened in the past, but also looking at a common application and a poster, we're announcing the lottery and all of these kinds of pieces that in the past have really lived in special education and now are really becoming a part of the central office, the main office in each building, and so that our principals continue to see their buildings as a pre-K to five building, which is really exciting.
Do we do, I don't remember, do we do the half-day classroom based on demand, desire for a half-day program, or was it budget, or were we just sort of dipping our toe into the process when we did it a couple years ago? Does anyone remember why we have to do the half-day potentially in the first...
Yes, so most, so we have some families that choose just the half-day.
And it's enough to support them on a classroom?
Remember, we just added the second program this year.
Okay.
So we had the full day. We had one program, and it was a full day.
Full day, yeah.
Because it covers our special education children who stay a whole day.
So the half-day, but again, is it more the demand, the parents were asking for the half-day, so we added it, or...
So the second classroom?
Yeah.
So our numbers were such that we could, we had a volume to do, we had census to do a second classroom. So the, but the truth is, is that some children go to the half-day morning in one classroom and then are staying for the whole day and go into the other class. So, so there's not really a group of kids that are only half-dayers that that classroom then shuts down and all of those kids go home. We do have enough full-dayers that we needed to spread them into...
Two classrooms.
Yes, or enough morning kids that we needed the two classrooms, that's right. Does that make sense? I think it did.
So can I ask you, you, the table?
Yes.
So it's the first time we've seen something like this, which is, again, thank you. And I'm aware that we're only a couple of years down the road of looking at special education as a district rather than as a single-building lens. And I'm just wondering, in terms of the, when I see some of the differences in numbers, I'm trying to caution myself from jumping to conclusions because I bet that there were building-specific categorization idiosyncrasies that meant that it's not really apples and apples when I look at a particular category. Is that fair?
It is true. When I, when I first came on board, one of the few, one of the first things that folks wanted to know from me was, what's your take on eligibility, Chris? And I said, well, because it's not special ed according to Christine Smith, it's special education according to the law. And so there has been a notion that, and I think it exists in lots of districts, that it's sort of what's, what does the director want to see in eligibility categories? It's kind of, it's beyond me in sort of understanding how we get there, but, so my work last year and really focusing this year has been on diving deeper into the process of eligibility and understanding the data that we have and how that, how that fits into the definitions that the state uses. So here in Massachusetts, we use a category called neurological. If you step outside of Massachusetts, that category is traumatic brain injury. So some of our school psychologists have been trained in other district, I mean, other states, and so even that piece was really different and uncovered in a different way. And so when you look at the definition for neurological, there's, it's pretty broad, whereas the state has given a lot more guidance around specific learning disability. The category of communication is pretty broad. So there were, there are trends in special education throughout the state and then some that are director-specific. So we're looking at all of that as a system and trying to, the school psychologists are working together for the first time ever, the team chairs and I are working together, and we're talking lots about eligibility, understanding the process at the table and who owns those decisions, and how we make comprehensive decisions that are, that are lasting for the student throughout, no matter what team sits in front of, right?
But so for a group like this, they're looking at, trying to infer some meaning from this, should, would you, again, caution us a little bit? Because four years ago, would one categorization of developmental delay in one building may have been a categorization of SLD in another building? Is...
Right. So yes, particularly those two, so developmental delay and SLD. I think that's what's happening here at Chickering, is that our students that could have been categorized as developmental delay, which is a category that the state defines as ending at nine years old, I think those students have been early identified as SLD students, which is specific learning disabilities, because I think we have better tests and more, better standardized tests now to help cull that, cull that information out of their results and their performance in the classroom and the standardized test.
I guess, is, is there anything to be inferred? I mean, there is, okay, yeah, okay, we should be cautious about interpreting differences, particularly differences between Chickering and Pine Hill and thinking, well, you know, that ought to represent, I don't know if the sample size is large enough, but is there anything that could, even if not right now, that over time might be able to learn from perhaps how the two schools do things differently, not in terms of... not in terms of assessment, but in terms of programming or interventions?
So this, I think you've done the right thing by having one director, first of all. I think that you need, this tells me that there were three people leading the ships, right? And that they were each sailing in their own way. And I think, as I dive deeper into understanding the way that we're looking at service delivery, I think that's the next lens and we're beginning to talk about that. When I look at percentages of students identified in special education through, when I compare Pine Hill to Chickering, they're like almost exactly similar, with the exception of one grade here at Chickering, which I think we've talked about for a long time, right? So that's reassuring, that we're not over-identifying kids. I don't think we're, you know, over, I think we're right on track in many, many ways. And I think it's good practice to be looking at a deeper dive of eligibility and program. And I think that's what's coming next. I included a different look at our out-of-district students. So typically, you have gotten something that's looked more like this with lots of information that I thought was a little, I wanted to protect some confidentiality for our students in a small district. I was a little concerned about that. But I still want to make sure that I represent to you the numbers of kids at each placement. It's interesting because you could have a number the same from one month to the next and you could still have had a movement, right? Because it could be a different student representing one of those numbers. But if you have any questions about the kinds of schools or what this, if this is not helpful, please let me know. Or if it does tell you something, you know, I'm interested to take your feedback, for sure.
So I guess my initial feedback is I really found those other reports to be quite valuable. I do understand the concerns around confidentiality and I'm hopeful that maybe you'd be able to take another swipe at providing some more granularity since it really is such a large part of the overall school budget. And I think everybody at this table is pretty keenly focused on where those monies are going. And frankly, I think if we had enough time, we could probably put most of that together, if not all of it, just with the signing off on the warrants. So the information, we do see, I think, most of it. We just don't see it in a way that is kind of easy to track. Okay, what might be rolling off in a couple of years? How much of the spend is going to what particular places? All those things, from my perspective, is useful to have.
And I think we went from this to this. And so I think Chris and I would like to have some time to like bring this to here. Because that was discussed between both the finance office and the special ed office. And so I think we're a hybrid right now, but definitely we'll have to put something together that takes the numbers and the financials and the locations of the schools and gives you the information that I think you want, but not as detailed as we were giving last year.
Okay, thanks.
But just for your knowledge, Michael, we are still using them. So we still use it as an internal document. So that's helpful so that we're still counting apples to apples as we go through the change of looking at how to present it differently, if that makes any sense.
No, I don't quite understand.
So we haven't thrown this away. This format hasn't gone away. So if we start to reuse some of it or modify it, it's not like we're starting from scratch again.
Got it. Okay.
We've been getting those updated monthly?
Yes.
But the challenge is that if you have a student outplaced at a unique school and everybody knows who that student is, if people hear, oh, he's at such and such school or she's at such and such school, it's such a small district that people can actually be identified. That's the challenge for us because we're trying to respect the confidentiality of the children and their families. At the same time, we know that the committees and the town governance, the town boards need this information in order to project. So we think we can find a middle ground on this. That might be a little more informative.
And to that point, we do see the amount each month that is going for student A to student B. So those are, you know, those are all before us in approving the warrants each month. And the, you know, the, so I guess my ask would be that there would be at least that type of information, since we have it anyway. It's just being collated in a way that's, it's kind of meaningful in a way.
Exactly. Right, right, right.
Because we have it anyway.
But those invoices, you don't really see the age of the child. I mean, they are sort of scraped down to what you see. And that's what we need to try to make the report a little more similar to that. We were giving very detailed...
Sure. Although some of those things, again, are important to think about, be out ears.
Exactly. But there's a way to do it. Yeah.
Any questions, Christine? Thank you very much. Moving on to Dr. Keen.
Yes. So I'm tired of believing that the name I've been working on. It seems like it's been a hang of a lot longer somehow. We're so busy. I've been learning so much about the system and I appreciate all the support that I've gotten. I've attended a lot of meetings, as I've mentioned in the past, and had good turnout. And people are really very passionate about the system. So I'm happy to be part of that. Just to bring you up to speed on a few things. You know that, where you see in my report, that we're working on the appendix C of the teacher contract, which is the section of the contract that deals with stipends, some leadership positions, some advisory positions, athletics. So that was something that came as an MOU from the contract. And so that group has come together, gave some information about that. And we had our first meeting, actually, yesterday. And it's a good group. And I think I'm confident that we can make some real headway, make that process of deciding what ends up on that appendix C list smoother. So that's a very positive thing. We also are, obviously, this year, looking at employee benefits as a result of changes to the healthcare system that we've been working with here in Dover and at the region, the West Urban Health Group. And we are just in the process, really, of looking at that, at changes. Rate Saver, which is what we use now, is going away at the end of June. So we have to work collaboratively to come up with something different. So we're well into that. Michael's been a part of that. We are, let's see, I want to thank, I have Renee Grady here. I want to thank Renee and her students. I had a chance to come by. I heard class for a little gift a couple weeks ago, the inspirational portraits. The kids, they gave me a beautiful book of their portraits and their poems that went with their portraits. And they did one of me. It was very enjoyable.
That's your, maybe the whole school thing?
Exactly.
Yeah, I love that idea.
Yep.
You could use a sort of like past presidents in a way.
I was actually expecting something like this, you know?
Yeah, it just goes somewhere.
Nearly as much hair.
Yeah.
But it was a very thoughtful attempt. So thank you for including me there. I sent a letter home today. Hope you got it. Trying to keep parents educated and in the loop on the things that I'm hearing about related to those types of challenges we're all facing. I've mentioned this many times before, that the social, emotional wellbeing of our children is really high on the list of priorities in both communities, clearly. And so when I come across things that I think will be helpful to parents, in this case, it was the impact that research is showing that cell phone use is having on kids, especially younger kids. I'd like to share that. So, and I did get some positive feedback from that. And it was ironic that it came on the heels of Katie Creer's presentation last night. I want to thank the SEF for making that happen up at the high school. There were a lot of parents from both communities. It was very well-attended. I wanted to, I wanted to mention that we did have a wonderful meeting with, I don't think I've had a chance to tell you guys this, but we had a great meeting. Our Boston parents, the unique, Veal put together a meeting with administrators and Boston parents. It was fantastic. They had a great time. It was enjoyable. We also had a nice recognition of our medical program and a donation from the Meadham Bank, which I would ask that you include that donation. We're certainly thankful to them. It's a $5,000 donation. Not everyone gets that. We were one of the five communities. So that was a fantastic one. I also wanted to review with you our enrollment numbers. So actually, rather than pull this out as a separate item, I essentially put it in my report. And what I tried to do is set it up in a way, and I think this is similar to what you've seen in the past, where you can look back at the past 10 years at each grade and the number of students in each grade. And then for this year, we break it out by actual classes. So you can see, obviously, for kindergarten, we have a 16, three 16s and a 17. And there's four sections. So you know, our class size policy is 17 to 22. So these numbers are good, right where we'd like to be, I believe. Maybe some sections on the lighter side, but then again, if you added another, if you took one of those sections away, your numbers would jump quicker. So that's the challenge, obviously. The numbers are relatively flat. Four student increase over the last year, you can see that. Consistency since September 1. We haven't seen any changes there. And we do, we are looking at the possibility of a larger fifth grade leaving and potentially a small K entering, but we don't have those K numbers yet. So that's pretty much it on enrollment. Are there any questions on that? Dr. Keen?
Okay. Thank you so much. Great. So moving on to the monthly financial report.
Yeah. So in your packet is a work in progress, I would say. But the biggest step we did was take the reserve that we had for contract negotiations and spread it based on how the contracts were settled and based on the personnel that we had budgeted. So we did do that. And we have, the way Dover turned, evened out, you have like $29,000 left over right now. I'm going to still probably use a little bit of that because we're still tweaking the shared positions and the central office positions, which haven't been completely updated on your statement as of now. As you can see, you pay nothing for a superintendent right now.
I'm really cheap.
So that's what we usually do in October. All of the central office payroll sits at the region and then gets charged back to the towns. In order to charge it back to the towns on budget sense, we create purchase orders of those amounts and put them in budget sense. So that's what we typically do in October. So any positions that are shared, and there are some in Dover that get charged back, you've one or two people that get charged back to the region and, just the region, will all be in your next statement. And then that way, you'll actually be able to see your true salaries. But I will tell you, based on what I know is happening, we will probably come in November and let you know there is a positive salary variance, mainly because of post-staffing, post-budget staffing changes.
How about the EA positions for the those before leaving?
Yes. Right. So right, yeah.
The two.
Yeah, the two. So in your numbers right now are not the two that we added. And one of the ones that left, I think, has already been unencumbered. So you are a little light right now. So when we come back again in November for your October statements, hopefully we'll be fully staffed and you'll see the real number. There's a lot going on in the salaries. Like you'll see, the one number that jumps out is, it looks like we're over-budget on teachers in the special ed world. But there's also, we changed some of the personnel that we're putting in our grants. And you were seeing some of that. So the salary analysis that I'll give you in November will explain all the changes and make all this make much more sense. But at least I wanted to show you that you did have enough money in your reserve to cover the contracts that we negotiated. So that's the good thing. On the expenditure side, the only thing I can highlight right now is we are seeing a negative variance in our sped services and supplies. And that's mainly to unbudgeted services for some of our in-district students that we didn't know about in March. Because remember, these numbers we came up with in March. A lot has happened since March. So we're seeing some of that fall out now. But nothing that our budget, I think, can't handle right now. We've encumbered our transportation services, some utilities, but there's some other things that we'll uncover during this month as things are more finalized. And so you'll have a better number again in November. Your out-of-district numbers are, this is what we know as of October, actually, this is what we knew about September 30. And I already can tell you that we already had some changes. And so your negative variance of $75,000 is probably closer to $110,000 right now. And as Chris mentioned, I think I wrote in my report, we had a budget of 37 placements for our fiscal year 18 budget. We have 34 placements right now, although they've changed so much, ins and outs and where they are, that it has resulted in a negative variance in the tuition. And we'll keep you up to date monthly on any of those changes. Any questions in the October 6 variance?
Other kind of positive variances, do you expect to stay? Like legal services, do you expect to stay that?
So legal services, that's where your extra $29,000 is sitting right now.
Okay, got it.
Right, yeah. Yeah. A little bit of it's still your real legal services. And then some of it's the legal server that hasn't been spread yet. Yeah, it's too early to really say anything else about variances of this structure in time. Just a quick update on fiscal year 18 project status. We are in the process of finalizing a change order for the one workspace on the first floor, the kindergarten K1 room, that needs to have AC installed. And so we'll work on getting that finalized. And we're still waiting for the final bills for the AC installation. So I don't have a budget to actual projection for it, but it's pretty much payment on budget. The key thing for that project is how we're going to fund it. So once you have the final numbers, I'll bring to you a suggestive way of funding the excess that wasn't, you know, you get $10,000 from budget, $5,000 from PTL. You're coming up with the other funds from your building and your gift fund. And I'll suggest a proration for that. And then we had Steve here tonight presenting the onsite inside report. So I hope you found that informational and helpful.
Please thank him for coming again. Thank you. Okay, any more questions at the door? Perfect. All right. Thank you. So I'd like to hand over for some curriculum nuggets.
I guess I'm first.
And I just want to say to both of you, I know it's, not that there isn't a busy time during the school year, but this is a busy, early time during the school year. So we really appreciate you doing this for us. It's the chance, for us, a relatively early stage of the year, for us to really get a proper handle on both the sides. That's our thing.
Well, please, very much appreciated being asked to present this. I'm glad you're so interested. I started with the presentation that we did a couple years ago. And it was interesting that much of it was the same in terms of how we're moving forward and some of the challenges that we're facing. The objective is around oral language to address rural conversations. So as you saw in my report, it's not about memorizing lists of colors and shapes. It's really about conversation. And I think most of you have had the opportunity to be in a Spanish class and seeing what that engagement looks like. So by the end of elementary school, students have been in the classroom. So by the end of elementary school, students who've been in the FLESS program for six years should have a novice high level of oral proficiency. That's, you know, foreign language speak for a very particular category. We're pleased that we are still on track for that. This is our new teacher, Shannon Pearson. We're really glad to have her on board, so she is a full-time Spanish teacher. So we have our two full-time folks this year, and they're doing a fabulous job. It's an immersion experience. There's parallel content in Spanish to the main classroom. Heavy emphasis on learning about other cultures, a lot of interactive learning and multidisciplinary experiences. I believe last time we presented to you, we were showing the Mayan experience and a lovely setup in the cave where kids were really exploring a lot of history. Laura Romer, who has...
I'm not surprised that's blurring.
Always in movement, yes. She has really driven this program from the start and written the curriculum from the beginning, all as a classroom teacher. Assessment, and this, this came up as part of our conversation that Beth mentioned. How are we going to assess our children? And how might that change at the little school and high school level? Switching from traditional modes into this FLESS mode. Outcomes: enhanced understanding of Spanish culture, so it's not just about Spain when we talk about culture, it's many different countries and places that are included in that. The ability to analyze when, when we step outside of our own space and look back at our own space, as well as other cultures, we're really able to analyze much better. Mastery of linguistic skills not found in English. Grammar and other things that are different are important to take a look at. Communicating beyond one's own native language. Cross-curriculum enrichment. One of my favorite science experiments, I saw in Spanish class, does the pumpkin sink or float? And gains in overall achievement. The research has been out there for many, many years about learning a foreign language and how that carries over in brain development to so many other areas. Challenges: there's a lack of a department or oversight across the schools, which is soon to improve the region. And we had a very in-depth, helpful discussion the other day about all the pieces that we need to consider, and we're really feeling a sense of urgency at this point, because in the fall of 2019, our students will be going to middle school. There's a lack of collaboration time for the FLESS teachers and the classroom educators to align curriculum. So in the elementary model, the Spanish instruction is to reflect the other instruction. Therefore, the teachers need time to meet with the third grade team, the fourth grade team, the kindergarten team. That's not built into the system. Our teachers have made it happen here and there, but it has not been structured, it has not been consistent. There's a lack of directed, high-level professional development. Again, that has been largely driven by our teachers. But when it comes time to, say, do a week-long intensive program, we can't simply ask for volunteers and who's available and working around people's schedules. Someone needs to say, this is really important for a department, this is the direction we're headed in, and we all need to do that. So that, I see, would be coming from someone in the chair position. Alignment of instruction: we have our professional development days when our educators get together, although if we have a part-time educator, they are not necessarily expected to come to all the professional development sessions. That's a challenge over time. We talked the other day about placement into leveled Spanish classes. What is that going to look like? What does that assessment look like? We anticipate that this will have a staffing and budget impact up at the region as well. And recalibrating the middle school curriculum. At this point, there is one entry point, beginning Spanish. What does that look like when we have not only students who've been taking six years, but students who've been taking six years and are at this level? Students who might need a little extra support? Students who, for a variety of reasons, might be ready to excel beyond that? So there's, there's going to be a tremendous impact. Although these are challenges, we are so proud and excited about our program, and as Beth was saying earlier, we, we know we can maintain that, we know we can excel, continue to excel in this area. We're just going to have to do a number of shifts in the next couple of years. Last slide, proposals. A .2 K to 2 foreign language chair is what we're thinking would be needed, similar to the K to 12 fine and performing arts chair and the 6 to 12 STEM chair that were put into place a couple of years ago. A .4 FLESS teacher will be rolling up into fifth grade last year. We also want to build that collaboration time. Right now, our Spanish teachers cover classes, the classes they need to instruct, but there isn't that collaboration time. The preparation time is there, it meets the contract, but the time within the day does not match up with grade-level teachers. So on a practical level, it's not working as well as, as we would like it to. If we were to support both of those at Chikering, that would be equivalent to adding a .6 position if someone were to fill both a chair position and a teaching position, being in a dual role.
What would you suggest as a solution for this collaboration time?
If we can lighten individual teachers' load in terms of how many classes they teach. Laura teaches 11 sections a day.
None of you. Eleven, only 20 minutes.
Some are 20, some are 30. So that's right. It's a good question, and it's an important piece to highlight. That's, it is a lot. It is an awful lot. So if the new teacher were able to pick up some of those existing classes, as well as fifth grade, and we redistributed it this year. In the past, we had a teacher teaching, for example, all of kindergarten and part of first grade, and the other teacher would teach part of first grade, second and third, that's how it was last year. This year, we're trying a new model. Both teachers are teaching all the grades. It provides a different kind of opportunity for collaboration, as well as co-teaching classes. And we felt that as we're approaching the end of elementary school, we really, it was a way to align instruction at least at Chikering.
How many sections would a 1.0 FTE teach?
Ideally, it would be around nine.
And is the, do you anticipate the collaboration need being constant, or will it start high and then kind of level off after the, the kind of the model is put together and bugs or...
That's an excellent question. I think it's going to be constant. I think the questions are going to be much more complex as we move into the high school, such as what are, what are our language requirements? I believe they're currently three years in the high school of, of language instruction. What does it mean when you have students who are proficient arriving in high school? Presumably, we would want to maintain the requirement for foreign language, but then what does that mean? A different language offering a larger range of languages. There are many new questions that will come on the horizon, and I think it's going to become more complex.
And so who's, who's owning the advancing, the, or leading the charge to advance the collaboration until 1819? Is that, are you doing that, Beth?
Yes. Yes. What we believe needs to happen in the chair position is someone who has an in-depth knowledge and training in foreign language. So our assistant superintendent really has done a fabulous job bringing this group together and talking about what we need to consider. I believe we need someone day-to-day who has that foreign language focus and an understanding of where that whole field is.
This is excellent. It's, it's, these are the challenges and, and bridges that you, that you get to cross when you, when you march year by year with such an encouraging program. This is wonderful to know that we're, we're thinking about it so thoughtfully, so.
We continue to have other districts visit and be very impressed with the models that we have. We've been able to stay true to the initial model, which is...
There's a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of people who didn't want us to do year by year because of, obviously, Rachel's child who missed out, but I think it's building a much stronger program and allowed us to really not have to rush, but take our time as it built up. So excited to see it move on.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Don't try and, I mean, gripping subjects, huh? Yeah, I know that.
If you have the results, you can just skip right to MCAS if you want right now. I mean, you do it so well, so it should be, you know, natural.
But it's actually, and so just to bring MCAS up from a couple of years ago, I do remember two years ago was the science, the lessons that I think were inferred from the MCAS a couple, two or three years ago was, at least led to discussions about our science curriculum. And...
That will add to it, too. Thank you. So I went back to my files, and in January of 2017, I was asked to come tell the story of ELA, and I reviewed those slides, and it was a much lengthier presentation than I'll see this evening, I have to say, to short it up, but looking at the agenda, the advanced, so slightly abbreviated version.
That's great.
One piece you want to refer to, you can probably find it someplace really safe, is the curriculum review document that Dr. Duke and team put together at the end of last year, which is a really nice first step in looking at pre-K to 12 science curriculum reviews. Generally, a three or four-year cycle. Beth has done a fabulous job stepping in and leading us forward in this. One of the challenges we found that is when you're in a high school, if you say this is the beginning of the ELA review, the whole ELA English Language Department works on that, and then in the second year, they go to the second step, and, but then the math department can start the next year, and then the science department can start the next year, and we had a great conversation with the Pine Hill leadership and Beth and our team, saying that doesn't work so well when you're the elementary teacher, because you've got one foot in science, one foot in each section. So it was a really thoughtful discussion of how are we going to go about this in a meaningful way for elementary school? So a curriculum review is intense, but how do we do it in a way that respects the time and energy of our teachers? So we're working off of this, and in that work, we came up with a few steps. So we'll start with my favorite triad. Start my pillars, curriculum assessment instruction. And for curriculum instruction, tie them together. Over the past three years, we've combined all of professional development, Pine Hill classroom teachers, special educators, Chikering, Pine, Chikering, special educators and classroom teachers. We brought in various consultants. We've used internal experts, which I'm very proud to say we've gotten lots of them. We took a very deep dive into the next generation in Massachusetts science standards. So as per usual, Massachusetts looked at the national standards, said, these are great, we're taking this much of them, and then we're adding on this much of our own. So you have these Massachusetts standards, which encompass all. It's like what we did with the Common Core. All of our unit writing continued in the understanding by design model. So last year, grade-level teams all co-wrote a unit. So they took an existing unit, tore it apart, used the understanding by design model, used the inquiry techniques that they had learned previous year to create a unit that they're all teaching this year. So we're just, I, I mean, we did some unit research, because then, in order to have any amount of success, we couldn't write a unit a year. That way, we'd never get to math. So we bought a unit as well. The goal of all of this is to create a shared curriculum with Pine Hill and Chikering. Please pause for a moment and celebrate that, because if you've been here for any amount of time, that's big news. The meets in Massachusetts, next generation standards. Our next steps in this year are to reflect all these units we've been teaching, look at modifications to those units, decide what that third unit is, and that's coming up on the next slide. Almost all of our teachers have one of their professional learning goals or their student learning goal around the science units. It's not the science, it's the math units. So you'll recall that we also bought the new version of Everyday Math and brought it in this year, thinking that it would be just easy conversion. Thank you, Renee. Perfect. Face of doubt, no. All right.
So, Chad?
Yeah, thank you.
So when you say you wrote a unit, you mean like they took a theme and they ran it through each grade level, setting the standards at each grade level, right?
Perfect segue to my next slide, Krista. Thank you. Whoops, no. Wait, skip ahead, there you go. Scope and sequence. So, right, scope and sequence, sure. So there are the three strands of science, physical science, life science, earth and space science, out of order to make sure you're paying attention. Grade levels down the side. And by color, you can look at this a little bit. So let's look at fifth grade for KIPS. Fifth grade co-wrote a water unit, which is in the earth and space science unit, and it includes weather as the environment, weather as a reusable resource, and an engineering piece, which actually is building water filters, building and testing water filters. And so that color is a little strange, but that's a peach, and so it's Pine Hill. So in fourth grade, they co-wrote plants unit. Third grade co-wrote a birds unit. We're looking to buy bird theaters, feel we can help out. Matter in second grade, plants and animals in first grade, force, push and pull in kindergarten. Then we bought units, which is from the company FOSS. All right, so you can then go through and see by the slightly different color, the blue versus the black, which units we bought with FOSS. We set money aside at the start of the, a year ago, we said $2,000 a grade level. Which was incredibly helpful, thank you, but not enough, sorry. So we bought, we could buy two units in second grade instead of four, usually buy one per classroom, some teachers are sharing. And in fourth and fifth grade, we were able to buy three, because there's five classrooms there. So we're going to be looking to buy more units and then buy whatever the third unit would be for the missing new unit. So eventually, that's all going to be filled, and all have all matching colors. Not yet, but we'll be there. The MCAS test, should you be interested, for next year, will it match the old standards? We've got another year before we have to pop all the way over to then for next year, I assume. Any questions so far? Assessment, yes, that's where we left off. So back to my pillars. Assessment is how do we know if they've learned it? And the odd bulging is intentional here. Tests and quizzes is what we have, or we had prior to now, which is sort of how we always figured out what they were doing in science. There was, you know, few papers, but generally tests and quizzes. Now with the new units and the new inquiry-based learning, the kids will be doing a lot more investigations. There's more schema development and more content reading. Each unit came with its own mini library of content materials. We're also having notebooks in every grade, and these are true science notebooks of the, of the gist of a journal. Everything they do in science class will be in that journal. It's their own journal we keep, to love, to hold, to treasure. They're not graded. The teacher's open a little bit, the value of the journal, the pressure. And the idea is that when the kids then have to go do the next experiment, well, the information you need is from the last experiment you did. Go get your journal. Use your results in your journal, and all of a sudden, you're taking better notes in your journal. Good, but you had the last one, it wasn't so hot, maybe, so. The outside assessments continue. The MCAS at grade five, which evaluates all the standards to grade five. This was taken right from Laura's report. But the interesting thing with FOSS are these focus questions. Every investigation has a focus question. So to start the lesson, here is the question for today, and then everything is a singular focus around that question. Right? Everything we're doing today has to do with what causes this change in motion. Then you have the actual investigation, the core of learning. Could be one day, it could be two days, it could be all afternoon. The really nice thing about this is every teacher's teaching every unit. So change in the way we teach, instead of that third, fourth and fifth grade group Instead of that third, fourth, and fifth grade, rotate through five units really fast, 14 lessons, hurry up, and run through their own lesson, which is just the... So hoping for much deeper dive into each unit.
At the elementary level, Deb, is it... I would think that perhaps reflection might be the most hard to grapple with. Is that a fair thing?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm done.
Yes. No, no, I'm familiar with it.
All right. Right. And that's when the kids develop their schema. They really think, well, what did they learn? How does it connect to what they already know? How can you make sense of that concept? There was lots of ways to do that. And that's a different piece. We don't... Didn't tend to spend a lot of time. And then the science book reading, that's actually when you read the article about volcanoes. So now you understand how that all connects with changes in energy.
Deb, are they doing it all at the same time now? All the classes are going through the same... For the same time?
Not exactly, partly because of shared resources. A lot of them are starting with the one they wrote because that was the one they were most ready to go, and then they're switching around.
Okay.
And then they're not all happening at the same time a day. Remember, it was, you know, fifth grade was always Tuesday, Thursday's right after lunch. And you can't do that now because you're sharing resources. And you don't have to move, even the time you saved by not picking up and moving.
Well, I was thinking for curriculum enrichment for some of the programs that support these, that one of the issues was always some classes hadn't even got to that, and it was months, you know, in the future, and the connection wasn't there. So has that remedied a little bit?
It should be, partly because there's three units now, two instead of the five. So the time away from that event would be...
Yes.
I'm doing fifth grade picking. This year, and it's been... We're mostly doing them, actually, in the spring.
Great.
Deb blocked out a lot of our dates for MCAS. But yeah, we have, like, Museum of Science coming, you know, back-to-back on those units, but...
Right. But everything will be done by that.
Yeah. Thank you for that work, because I know scheduling fifth grade is probably the hardest one to do.
And for... Just so that you know, like, in fourth grade, we had scheduled rocks and minerals early, so we had rocks and minerals in the fall, when we haven't taught it yet. But that was just because we didn't know what we were doing for the schedule. So next year, we would obviously try to do it.
I know time is always an issue, so I'm not discounting that.
Thank you. All right, we've done the scope and sequence. So we continue to be, as Laura said, very proud of our teachers and students and the work that they've done. It's been a big undertaking to kick on new science, new Everyday Math, all of the goals, and parent teacher conferences, all by October 17. Here we are. Any other questions?
Deb, when you showed the curriculums that were jointly written by Pine Hill and Chicaring, so the ones that are not yellow, are those different at Pine Hill than they would be here?
Right. Yes. So at third grade, everyone's doing motion and matter this year, that FOSS unit. Chicaring is doing technology and engineering challenges, which actually go into all three of the sciences. And then birds is what Pine Hill's doing. So look at, right now, two-thirds of the science instruction at Chicaring and Pine Hill is identical. One-third is still, looking to kind of hang on to a beloved one anymore. So eventually, we'll all be the same in all of them.
Are you looking at the internally developed versus the purchased units and the pros and cons? And I guess I... Is it an overall positive, the internal development, the experience? It has to be more time and more work? Is it more fulfilling or enriching teaching something that was developed, you know, by internally versus something that's come in, or...
Renee, you want to field that one for me?
Well, you know, we have ribbon and plants, and then we have ribbon and rocks and minerals. So, you know, we haven't... I taught rocks and minerals before without the kit, and that was a learning experience. I don't know if I would say there's this, like, ownership, like, oh, this was so great and we developed it, because I think, you know, there's such different topics. It's not like I know everything and anything about plants, and therefore, I'm the expert and can teach everybody about what's going on. I think we're looking forward to the FOSS kits because they have a real strong foundation of all the elements that we need to use. So I think if you would have bought us three kits, we would have been psyched. But it was a good experience working with Pine Hill.
Yeah, there was a lot of other advantages to...
Yes.
Thank you.
I was going to make a connection between this and FLESS in that it's exciting to see the inquiry-based work and the journals happening at the elementary school level because I think just as Spanish is going to impact the middle school teaching and high school teaching in foreign language, this is going to impact the way the middle school and the high school are going to be teaching science. It's going to really elevate the level of discussion that you see at the middle school and the high school, and it is going to push the high school teachers eventually to say, "We need to start getting more inquiry-based in our three subject areas as well." So again, thank you to the elementary groups for being the leaders in this one.
I already noticed in my son's sixth-grade science class, they start with a question of the day, so that's obviously a similar approach, and then they dig down from there. So that's...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, moving on. So the next item is really a... We do this every year. It's a call for school committee members in the next two weeks, let's say, to feed to me any items that they would like to see emphasized or incorporated or built into the FY19 budget. We have a guidance from the town of Dover, which is level service. But building the budget is one of our core responsiveness inputs, and this is a really good time of the year. I'd like to make the point everyone to think about it, mulve all the issues, and fees for... Feed to me back to me by email in the next two weeks, anything, any areas they'd like to see incorporated. And then as the budget's built over the coming weeks and months, we can hopefully reflect We have a consent agenda, and thank you everyone for taking the time to look at it. We have the Metco donation from Needham Bank. We have two parent donations, one of $5,000, one of $25,000. And we have the Dover School Committee minutes of September 18, 2017. Do I have any discussion on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, Henry. Second? Second. Thank you, Michael. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Brilliant. And then for communications, for everyone's information, you've got the region minutes and the Shervun School Committee minutes from September. Again, just the diary note, people. November 14th, next meeting, is it April?
The 21st. What grade? 21st. Yeah, I was like, wait a minute, I have to have their budget for the 14th? They get the 21st. Yeah.
21st it is.
November?
Yep.
Yeah.
At... I'll confirm the time, but it's the morning meeting for budget discussion.
That is the time.
21st, yeah. And without any further ado, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:08. Thank you very much. Confirm the time.